Good evening, everybody. We are going to reconvene the March 27, 2023 meeting. And I will ask Vice Mayor DeRosa to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the United States of America is to uphold which is shanest one nation under God, freedom, justice for all.
All right. This evening, our special presentation is from Scott Dring from Visit Dublin, Ohio, who's going to provide a hospitality industry update. So hi, Scott.
Paul, thank you. Great to see all of you. Appreciate the opportunity. I know Matt has provided a little data here and there throughout the last couple of months as a vibe, but I wanted to kind of talk a little about some data and kind of go in the trenches a little bit with you. This is Dublin hotel occupancy, 57%. It is the lowest occupancy that we've had in the history of the city. You can see the red bars there are from COVID years. Two big reasons that it's down. One, obviously, you've heard is business travel. That's the main culprit. And we know it's the main culprit because you can see here, business travel, obviously, during the week, Monday through Thursday, they averaged 58% occupancy rate last year. If you look at what it was in 2019, it was 78%. So substantial decreases you can see from year over year as well. If you look at bed tax chart, again, good news here, we're 40% up versus last year. And even better news this year, we're 29% up year over year. So we're trending well, and we will be able to get to 2019 levels by the end of the year. So how can we be down in occupancy historic levels and still up a little bit in bed tax revenue? One reason is our average daily rate is as high as it's ever been. People are paying more for their hotel rooms, you can see there. But more importantly is, I think, the diverse market that we have. Not all our eggs are in one basket in terms of corporate travel. We're diverse. We attract leisure travelers, sports travel, bus tours, small association business. So we've been kind of to kind of be able to weather the storm a little bit there as well. Visit Dublin has never spent any resources on corporate travel. There's nothing we can do to talk Cardinal, Wendy's, other Dublin corporations into traveling. They'll do what they need to do, and they work directly with hotels. What we've spent all our resources on in the past is those other markets. And those other markets are really keeping us afloat and will continue in the future as well. I could tell you back in 2015, many of you know that Dublin City Council increased our bed tax from 25% to 35%, a 10% increase. That 10% increase, we spent 100% of that additional revenue, and we continue to do it this day, to market and sell and attract visitors from our regional markets. It was something we had never done in the past. We never marketed the city outside the state of Ohio. You can see there the markets that we marketed towards, Indy, Detroit, et cetera, et cetera there. And it was truly a game changer. I could tell you some of the ROI that you see here. Again, on the left is five-year gap business travel. It's status quo. It is what it is. It's always been a strong market. If you look on the right there, the leisure market from 15 and then in 16 was our increased revenue, you see the dramatic increase there, almost 12 percentage points. Even if you go one step further, the same story, 2022. Obviously, you've seen how we've hit hard times on business travel. Going through the pandemic, we've only dropped eight percentage points in 2002 in our leisure market. And I think even more exciting about this is we have a lot of room to grow in that leisure market. So we have 34% or so, and that's why we've been, you know, looking at things such as the athletic facility and others to kind of figure out how to get more business in that leisure market as well. Kind of see the bed tax chart again here as well. And again, the green represents when we had the increased funding. So you can kind of see your ROI there. Obviously, the new product, all of you have been a big part in creating, has a big part of this. But you have to market your city, you have to promote your city to make sure people know about that new market. I think a great example of that, if you think of the two major cities in this country that you would think have all the product they need is Las Vegas and Orlando. This year, Las Vegas CVB will spend $125 million in their advertising. Orlando will spend $95 million. So it's competitive out there. We're all vying for the same visitors, and we're all doing the same thing. So marketing is truly important. Obviously, the ROI that we've provided, you know, we have ROI numbers. We have, you know, the amount of visitor they spend in the city. But we tend to like to use the metric of just occupancy, especially the business leisure travel. It's real numbers we can touch, feel, and see, and I think it just proves the economic impact in ROI that we provide. I did want to thank all of you for taking time to review the bed tax fund over the last couple of months. We know it's important to all of us. I know it only represents about 3.1% of your budget, but we know how important it truly is. You know, it represents a lot of things that are really not non-bed tax supporting efforts, such as community events, arts, Dublin Arts Council, grant program and such. So it's critically important. But I think one thing that's important, too, is the impact that our visitor has in our community goes so far beyond just bed tax. In fact, it's just a sliver of the impact they have. So next time you go on your vacation or go on a trip, add up all the money you spend in the community, and then look at your hotel bill and see what you spent on bed tax. I guarantee the bed tax will only be 3%, 4%, 5% of your overall spend in the community. So the major impact you're seeing, the greatest impact our visitors have on our community is economic impact. And what I mean by that is every visitor we attract from Pittsburgh in one of our packages, a bus we secure, a trade show, whatever it might be, they are spending tens of millions of dollars every year at our restaurants, at our retail, at our events. That's creating economic impact. It's creating jobs. It's creating more income tax. So what does all that mean to your next door neighbor? I mean, you know, if I told someone that, they kind of rolled their eyes. It doesn't mean anything to them. How does it impact them? I think what it means is we would not have the amenities we have right now in this community if it was not for the visitor. There's not enough demand by Dublin residents to fill all these restaurants, to fill all these amenities we have, all these shops, restaurants, et cetera. There's just not enough demand. So that's why it's important for visitors to help with that economic impact and again to fill those restaurants. And people that want to come here in the city, obviously, they want to live here, they want to work here in a thriving economy, a thriving hospitality industry as well. So I think it's a selling point as well. And don't forget about the profile that the visitors raise in our city as well. You know, some of them are coming here from a soccer tournament, maybe coming from a bus tour, vacation. It could be the first time they've ever visited the city of Dublin. That same person may someday be looking for central, looking in central high region and say, where can I move? Where can I start my business? They're going to remember Dublin. I think we've always said, once we get someone to Dublin for the first time, they will be back. You know, I can say that I've been here 22 years, and you're still stuck with me here. So I think there's absolutely, once we get people here as well. So I'll kind of step up my pulpit here for a second and talk just a second about athletic facility. Since the last we met, we presented that study to you back in January. We've been busy doing a few things. We met with DYA, Ohio Premier, Club Ohio, some of the other organizations to let them know the results. Our board created a very high-level memo that created some different funding models that were potentials that we presented to Megan and her staff as well. I still have this dream of getting some of that Franklin County bed tax. You know, our visitors have spent $49 million toward that tax, and we've received $0 in the last 35 years. So I'm hoping there's something we can do there as well. I'm actually meeting with Union County in the next couple of weeks to see if there's some kind of financial interest that they might have as well. All that said, you know, I think we never intended to dump this on your lap and have the city figure out how to get it done. We want to help in any way we can. We want to partner with you in any way we can. And we appreciate Megan and you just considering this project. I know you guys are being pulled in a million different directions, but if there's anything we can do to help you with that, those resources, you know, let us know. With that, one thing we're working on, does anyone know what's happening April 8, 2024? I know it's on your calendars. The total solar eclipse, believe it or not. And believe it or not, Dublin is going to be in one of the best viewing areas in this region. We're going to be part of the path of totality, they call it. So minute, 30 seconds, it'll be gone. So we're working, it's tremendous interest, we're working bus trips, groups. I think we've reached out to the city to see if there's some kind of opportunity we can do with you guys as well. But looking far ahead, again, that may be an opportunity. So again, you know, thank you for the opportunity. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have anything they want to ask Scott? Kathy?
I had a quick question. So I read a bit about pent-up demand versus ongoing demand conversation about travel. Is what we're seeing a spending of pent-up demand, or what is the predictions? It's level flat?
Yeah, I think last year, it depends what market you're looking at. So the leisure market last year was a huge pent-up demand. Yeah, I mean, last year was tremendous pent-up demand. But then I think we've seen since the summer passed, we've seen kind of a leveling of it, and it's kept a level that it was, which is encouraging as well. All the travel in Tennessee's experts think, even with inflation being as high it is, people are still going to travel. And I think one benefit for us is there's going to be a lot of weekend trips, regional trips, getaways to the family, which fits perfect for our market as well. You know, the beach, last year, the beach destinations, they all had record years, I think, because of that pent-up demand. So those destinations, you know, made all kinds of economic impact in those areas. But I think we did see a little bit, but I think it's leveled off now, and we've been, it hasn't dipped back down. We've kept the level that we had. Yeah.
Anybody else? I will say, when we were in Dublin, Ireland, they said their corporate travel is coming back. But their tourism is their major industry. But who knows? Keep your fingers crossed. Maybe we'll raise over the mountain again. So thank you, Scott, very much. Appreciate it. The next portion of our agenda is citizen comments, and it's an opportunity for anyone who would like to comment on a topic that is not on our agenda this evening. And I am looking at Lindsay to see if anyone has signed in. We see none. Seeing that we don't have anyone, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda this evening from the council? Are you none? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Would you like a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Thank you. We have some postponed items. Resolution 16-23.
Acceptance of Neighborhood Design Guidelines Applicable to Residential Planned Unit Developments.
All right. Our staff report is from our senior planner, Sarah Holt. Good evening, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. We're very glad to be back before you with the Neighborhood Design Guidelines. And you may recall that these guidelines are intended to work with the code amendments that are next on the agenda. So these work together as a duo, if you will. These guidelines were initially heard on the 13th of February, and then again on the 27th of February, and then tabled until tonight. And I'll go through the changes that were made based on the latest discussion. And please feel free to follow along in your memo and your comparative document that was provided as well. So regarding the greater than 45% lot coverage, that was a topic of discussion last time we were here. Clarification has been provided on page 38 for private open space. A second bullet refers to the development text setting a maximum lot coverage amounts, therefore determining the area allowed for private use. The fourth bullet notes that some lots may elect to have private open space on the side. And a new sixth bullet defines minimum private open space to be 150 square feet with a minimum dimension of 10 feet. And we've also added a note that clarifies that both Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission will determine the correct amount of open space based on product, location, house size, and a number of other factors. On the same page, we also talked about lot coverage, and we added a fourth bullet noting increases in lot coverage must be offset by increases in common open space. There was a discussion about alleys as well, and we've replaced the alleys nomenclature with service courts throughout the document. And this indicates the intended higher quality and character that we're anticipating. In this topic on page 33, we added an introductory paragraph to emphasize this is a potential option in appropriate locations. The first bullet was modified to include public road standards and approval by the city engineer. The second bullet was also modified to minimize views into service courts with closer or narrower setbacks. The fourth bullet sparks creativity by suggesting that parking courts and open spaces may be incorporated into these service areas. And we also added local photographic examples. On page 31, the graphic was updated with, along with the new nomenclature. And then we also clarified the difference between townhome examples and zero lotline homes. And on that topic, zero side yard products were also discussed last time we were here. And this is, again, another option to entice creativity. These products allow usable side yard space of 12 feet, which exceeds the new private open space minimum dimension recommendation. Or in other words, the area is more usable than two six-foot slivers on either side of the lot. On page 40, we added an introductory paragraph to describe. And then on page 41 in the exhibit, we show hedges rather than fences as a way to separate those different spaces. We made some additional updates throughout the document. We corrected various typos, added more local photos, added the court lot for additional design ideas, especially regarding garage placement, and then included some more hedge options for screening rather than fencing. In summary, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval in January, and we're requesting acceptance of this resolution tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any public comment on this? All right. Counsel, open for discussion. Any comments? Amy?
First, I want to say thank you for making all the changes. I know our conversation was a little muddled last time, and I think you did a good job. I only, since I reread the whole thing again, I caught a couple minor little things. So I just have a couple. On page six, we list the bullets of objectives, and then we say additionally but lower priority concerns. I have a suggestion to remove the but lower part. I would just say additional priorities. I don't know that we should say they're necessarily less. On page 30, skip to this. The second bullet, it says architectural design of residential buildings should have a timeless quality that is based on vernacular form and clad with exterior materials. My suggestion is to remove the based on vernacular form. If the whole point is to entice creativity, we might have an architect who wants to come in and kind of do some type of theme neighborhood where they're all Cape Cod's or something, which is not vernacular. It actually is a type. So it's just, I would just say a timeless quality, in my personal opinion. And then the, one, two, three, the fourth bullet on that same page goes to the same thing. If we're trying to entice creativity, the bullet reads now architectural diversity within a neighborhood shall be provided. And then goes on, I would just say maybe provided, and those are suggestions. Again, you might have a theme neighborhood where they possibly want the buildings to look alike. So I think, and then I found one typo on page 42. It's just a word was left out. The first paragraph, it says at this width, garages may front loaded and set behind. I think it's just, you just left out the word be, maybe. And that's all I had.
Any other thoughts? Chris?
So if the first bullet point, we're going to add that it should must meet public road standards, which public road standard is it that we want it to meet? Neighborhood standard or, you know, in terms of widths and? We have a lot of different road standards. Which one are we wanting these service courts to be built to? Are we going to have a new service court standard that we're going to design? Or are we going to utilize an existing standard? And if so, which one?
So I'm afraid I don't have an answer to that specific question. I imagine that is going to be the one that most closely matches, or perhaps we would develop a new standard that could be acceptable to the city.
Yeah, the intent is to ensure that it meets the, our typical standard, which Paul and I were just discussing a little bit, so the curb and gutter, so it would have that same character and buildup and everything that we'd require for any other public street. That helps. Yeah.
Well, I'd be interested to see what, you know, what the width of that would be. And because I think all of that's going to be important for size and scale to make sure that it's, you know, viewed as more of a secondary street than it would be as a primary street. So how they relate to one another, I believe, is important, being that it's going to be a service road. So I don't know that we need to decide that today, but it does need to be decided before we start, you know, utilizing this as code.
Yeah, absolutely. And we would work with engineering to make sure, I mean, we have our typical right-of-way with requirements based on the street type, so we would continue that conversation and make sure that that's addressed accordingly.
Right, but this would not be an existing street type, right? I don't think that we have a service court as a street type.
Not necessarily, but I think we would look at how to treat this in relationship to that. So I think we can make sure that's covered for sure.
I, for me, it would be important how it related in terms of size, that the width of that street would be different, but it would still have the same load carrying capacities as the primary street. I think that would be important. So whatever that relationship is, I think there just should be one, and we should promote that so that they're all the same, if that would become something that the community decided to embrace and was repeated, that they would be similar in that respect. And then I have one additional concern. If we look at adding service courts and these kinds of, this kind of development, you're going to have, you know, we typically just look at lot permeability, right? But if we add these service courts, it's really going to increase the square footage of asphalt on, and I'm not sure what we would do then with our runoff calculations and, you know, all of those sorts of things. And then the perviable, the permeable, I'm sorry, surface area of the development in its entirety, rather than lot by lot, this is going to dramatically change the permeability on the entire development. So I think that that would need some consideration in terms of how we review those projects and the stormwater associated with it, because these would, I think these would drive our stormwater numbers up considerably. And if we're trying to have these more dense neighborhoods, then we're going to need a whole lot more space for, to store that, you know, storage capacity. So I just think that maybe we need to do a little bit of work on some Xs and Os of this is how it would trade out, and are we willing to have that increase in permea, in impervious across the entirety of a development? So those were the two things that I thought were important to bring forward.
Any other comments? I have a question for, oh, I'm sorry, Kathy didn't see you.
I first a comment and then a question. So comment is, thank you. I mean, I know we're talking around the edges here, but this is a very big step forward, and I know the boards and commissions are looking forward to it. So I just wanted to be sure, the forest and the trees conversation here a little bit. I appreciate that the concepts are more concrete, if you will, and their definitions, and so I thank you for that. The question, and I maybe I missed this last time, the, on page 38, when we talk about the private space, private open space coverage, that new bullet that you added, that speaks to typically the minimum area provided shall not be less than 150, blah, 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 and 10. How were those numbers arrived at? The 150 and 10? How was that determined as the minimum?
I think it was imagining... I think it was imagining a typical patio and a typical green space, and what is usable? You know, what is something that is usable for a family, a residence? And again, it's going to depend on who the target audience is, who the target buyer is, what the product type is. We wanted to identify this as a minimum.
So this was a staff recommendation? It wasn't necessarily a planning and zoning recommendation, per se?
Correct.
Okay. So it looks like, John, I, I just want to make sure, again, and I know I'm, I'm responsible for some of this language, and I appreciate it very much. To your point, it has to be enough, because people come back and say, you know what? I really want to build my patio, right? And I want to put my table and my chairs and my barbecue, and I want to do my thing out there. And so I, I am no expert. I know we have some here on council that swim in this, these waters. Is, is, is that enough? Is that a fair minimum? And I was just interested in how they determine. I appreciate that it's there, and maybe it is. I, I don't know, and that's the reason I'm asking the question, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we brought that up at the last meeting, and I think we wanted to move it up, and that's a ten-by-fifteen-foot patio. And then back to Chris's comment, I think if you might want to add permeable pavers, because we don't allow gravel in these projects, so if you just add an alternative for permeable pavers, to get back to the discussion on the water runoff and controlling that. So that's it. Thanks.
I think the hundred and fifty square foot's an improvement from where we were. It's a ten-by-fifteen. that should be the minimum that would be constructed. Nobody would build anything less than ten-by-fifteen if they, except a builder who wanted to say, oh, there's a patio included, right? No individual who was looking at it. And maybe we have it be a bit of a range, that it has to, at a minimum, that the install is at a hundred and fifty square feet, but there, but have the expandability, right, of a fifteen-by-fifteen is entirely different than a ten-by-fifteen, right? That, that has a lot more room. So maybe you have the provision, you know, where they would need to demonstrate where additional outdoor space could be expanded into. I don't know that we need to determine that here tonight, but when you go and make a few of these changes, I would be encouraged to see, you know, with outdoor expansion areas identified on preliminary plans, so that if someone wanted to do something a bit more creative, they have a place to go. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you. And a little bit more perspective on this topic. We are talking about everything from townhomes, which are single-family attached, to sort of manor lot homes, which are on much larger lots. So this minimum, if we're talking minimum, that is what you're going to get on the townhome end of things.
Yes, but we likely will have the developer come in, because they're going to want to maximize the number of lots on anything. So even if you have the manor, they're, they might see, you know, where the minimum is. And I think that might be where we have the identified outdoor expansion areas, so that they could say, you know, relative, if you're looking for this, this larger home, right, that, that this is, you've met the minimum, but you also need to identify where it could be expanded, should that be desired.
Yeah, I think that's some good language, because we know that they'll come back with them, even on the bigger things. We've just seen it, or we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, our Board of Zoning Appeals wouldn't be handling these all the time, because those are not, the, the things that are coming back are not paddy homes. I mean, they're not townhomes, they're bigger. So I think maybe with the, what was your phraseology?
Identified expansion areas.
Would be, would be good, because again, what we're trying to do is just head off what we know is going to happen, and it has repeatedly. So with that language, again, I appreciate, very big step forward. Thank you.
I have a question for you, and it, and I'm going back to, I might have to jump ahead because it's in the, it'll be in the ordinance, and, but it, but it applies to the design guidelines. And it would be my question that when we talk about open spaces, I didn't see in the design guidelines, and I, I read through it a couple times, but I, I want to make sure I don't miss it, that we don't just talking about, and I think I brought this up at the last meeting, the difference between an open space that is open and non-structured, and open space that could be counted, that could be structured. And what I, what I mean by that would be, like, if developers said, I will build a community pool, can that count as open space? I will build a little, small building for gathering to play games for the neighborhood. Could that be counted as open space? And I, I couldn't determine in this design guidelines if those kinds of placemaking opportunities would be, would be counted as open space. Is that a question that I, that, that I, that I think is worth, you know, we're thinking community garden, could you, that community garden would make sense as an open space, because it's not a structure. But I know that when we sat on Planning and Zoning before, you tried to get them to build a covered deck next to a pond, and that's open space, really. So are placemaking opportunities incorporated in the design guidelines? I guess that's my question.
We believe that they are.
Okay. Okay. So that's important. I think that's an important thing, because one of the things that we don't want is just plain open space that is not interactive, I guess, is what I'm saying. That's the hope of this. So great.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? No hearing, none. Are we ready to take a vote on this? Counsel? All right. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance zero-five dash twenty-three.
Amendments to Code Sections one-five-two-point-oh-oh-two, one-five-two-point-oh-eight-six, one-five-three-point-oh-five-oh, one-five-three-point-oh-five-two, one-five-three-point-oh-five-four, one-five-three-point-oh-seven-one, one-five-three-point-one-three-four, and one-five-three-point-one-nine-zero to update the Residential Plan Unit Development references to include neighborhood design guidelines.
Sarah? And no changes have been made since the last time that this came before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but request approval tonight.
All right, thank you. Any public comment, Lindsay? No? Any other questions, counsel, concerning this? Having none, Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Our second reading, public hearing and ordinances. I move to waive counsel rules of order and read ordinances zero-six-dash-twenty-three through zero-nine-dash-twenty-three together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Ordinance six-twenty-three, appropriate an easement from Michael J. String and Melody R. Forrester String, husband and wife, from the property located at seventy-five Franklin Street, for the public purpose of carrying out the South High Street Utility Burial Phase One project. Ordinance seven-twenty-three, appropriating easements from Harry G. Hirth, trustee of the Harry G. Hirth Revocable Trust, dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand and six, from the property located at one-five-zero Franklin Street. Ordinance eight-twenty-three, appropriating easements from Evelyn H. Worchansky and John I. Worchansky, trustees of the Evelyn H. Worchansky Revocable Trust, dated April tenth, nineteen ninety-six, from the property located at one-six-zero Franklin Street. And ordinance nine-twenty-three, appropriating easements from Diana L. Taut and Gerald A. Taut, husband and wife, from the property located at one-seven-two Franklin Street.
Our staff report this evening is from our Director of Engineering, Paul Hammer Smith. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening, members of counsel. There is no new information to provide this evening regarding these ordinances, and I only wanted to update you that our negotiator has been in contact with a couple of the residents, and those conversations continue in terms of trying to come to an agreement with the property owners. So we are hopeful that we can come to a peaceful and amicable resolution. But these ordinances are recommended for adoption this evening by staff.
Thank you, Paul. Any public comment? All right. Questions for counsel?
Paul, a question. How are we on timing on this? What, what, if, if it didn't go well, and we have to go through the things that we have to navigate, what, what would we be looking at of when this project could come to fruition?
We have write-of-entries from all four property owners, so we have the ability to continue construction with the project. We only want to get to resolution before we get to the end of the project, and that's what we're hopeful for, so that's what this process allows.
And what is the timeframe of completion of this project?
We are going to get ready to start on construction. We're hopeful probably, you know, towards the end of this year to be done with the majority, but it's probably going to carry into the first part of next year.
So maybe by St. Patrick's Day next year, the telephone poles could be down?
That would be wonderful.
That would be a great target.
Yep. But keep in mind that we do need phase two for the poles to come down on, on South High Street. So this is just the first phase of this project.
Are all of them critical to phase two?
Pardon me?
Are all of them critical to phase two?
Yes. I mean, well, I mean, the acquisitions aren't critical to phase two. It's just that phase two for all the overhead utilities on South High Street, the answer to that question, yes, we need phase two for that to happen.
And what is the schedule on phase two?
We are just starting design on that phase, and then construction would be next year.
Because I was noticing, you know, as the trees are starting to bud, they're, that because we selected such a great quality tree for that street tree, they're growing rapidly, and so it's going to be important that we get those things down before they impede the growth of the trees that we installed.
Understood, so.
I knew you would. Thank you.
Paul, those street trees on the west side, those poles won't come down until phase two?
Correct. All the poles.
All the poles. All right. Any other questions for Paul? No? All right. So Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ordinance ten-dash-twenty-three.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right. Our staff report this evening is from Director of Finance, Matt Stifler. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, members of counsel. We provided an updated memo in your packet addressing some of the questions that counsel had proposed at the previous meeting. Staff recommend approval at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. Any public comment? All right. Any questions for Matt this evening? Chris?
In Section Seven, you have the reappropriation of a million dollars from the Capital Construction Fund for Riverside Crossing Park. It follows up to say that, that there will be engagement of the design consultant to reexamine the master plan for the west side of the river. And it looks like in the engagement of the river portion of that, what is it that we, can you give any insight on what it is that we're intending, how we're intending to deviate from the plan that this body originally approved?
Based on what we have in the budget today or what we're looking to do in the future?
Well, whatever this reappropriation of a million dollars says, it says that additionally, staff intends to engage with the original design consultant to reexamine the master plan for the west side of the river. Given recent and upcoming developments, as well as the upcoming completion of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, staff seeks to ensure that the vision of the development of the park and open space on the west side of the river is appropriate for current and future conditions. So I guess I'm asking, of that million dollars, what, what portions of what we saw in terms of the park design are we looking to reengage and reevaluate?
When we looked at the west side of the river, you recall, we had some issues with some of the potential development that was there. We also had property acquisition. So the master plan that's currently in place is not very detailed. We want to make sure that what we are doing over there still fits within the city council's desire, the community's desire, based on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So we'd like to use a portion of that money to revisit that whole west side to make sure that we are all on board and on the same page as to the site plan and the amenities going in.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great exercise, given the things that are, have changed. Certainly, a lot has changed in the last, what, four years ago, when that design was originally contemplated. I just, I was just curious to see what those changes might be, and I think this body would be interested in, in seeing what the consultant comes back with of, of the changes that are, that they deem desirable.
We will also engage with city council for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update that might also provide some of that information at that time. So we'll put two of these things together at the same time and make sure that we're all heading down the right path.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? John, did you have anything? All right. And I also appreciate the fact that the, some of that money is getting to repair the staircase in the Dublin Springs Park. It's, it's in pretty bad shape. Yeah. So I appreciate that. Matt, anything else? All right. Let's see then, we have a second reading concerning, let's see, I lost my place here. Jenny, you have to please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
All right. Now we're on to introductions, first reading, ordinance eleven-dash-twenty-three.
Amending Dublin Codified Ordinances, Section thirty-two-point-six-three, membership to eliminate reference to the term and date of Community Services Advisory Commission members.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Staff report this evening is from Assistant Law Director Thad Boggs.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, members of council. I do not have a lengthy discussion of this particular ordinance for you this evening other than to say that it is in keeping with the upcoming resolution, where council is seeking to converge all ending dates for the terms of your board and commission members. This is presented in an ordinance form because the CSAC term-ending date is set in the codified ordinances.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Hearing none. Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Thad? All right. Our second reading is scheduled for April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolution twenty-four-dash-twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the various stormwater improvements program.
I'll introduce it.
Drive near sixty-three, sixty-five Riverside Drive, and storm conduit and three drainage structures on city property located behind fifty-seven, twenty-five and fifty-seven, thirty-three Stockton Way. The work for this program was funded from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-six Capital Improvements Program in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for various stormwater improvements, EF two-hundred. Funding is being re-appropriated in two thousand and twenty-three through ordinance ten-dash-twenty-three, which council just adopted this evening. The engineer's estimate for this project is one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. On February fifteenth, three bids were received and publicly opened, and Strauser Paving Company Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Strauser Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for this program. Presently, this work is expected to commence in April or May and be complete by the end of July. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Public comment? None. Counsel comment? All right, hearing none. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saluto?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five-dash-twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Tartan West Water Tank Repainting Project.
I'll introduce it.
All right, Paul.
Thank you. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the Tartan West Water Tank Painting Project, which consists of repainting the exterior of the 500,000-gallon Spheroid water tank located at 7160 Glacier Ridge Boulevard and performing additional repairs. This project was funded from the 2022-2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of $390,000 for the repainting. Funding is being reappropriated in 2023. Sorry, I got an update. Through the ordinance 10 dash 23, again, which you adopted this evening. The engineer's estimate for this project is $207,900. On February 23, five bids were received and publicly opened, and Midwest Tank Management submitted the lowest and best bid of $143,300. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Midwest Tank Management in the amount of $143,300 for this project. Presently, this work is expected to commence in May of this year and be complete within 45 days after the tank is taken out of service. Again, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Public comment on tank painting? Any questions from council? John? Do you have one?
Just a comment. I noticed that the since this is your last report of the evening, I really appreciate the new trail. You sort of see how you guys are cutting it along 745.
Yep.
North of Emerald Parkway. That's a really nice addition, so.
Good.
Looks like you got the grade under control, and it's.
Yes.
Kind of.
We're moving along.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just kind of curious, is the tank just all one color, or does it have a logo on it?
It is going to look identical to the way it looks presently.
Okay.
It'll just look refreshed.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. No other questions? Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Resolution 26 dash 23.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to Section 8.04 Contracting Procedures, Paragraph C, waiver of competitive bidding of the revised charter for the purchase of beer for the 2023 Dublin Irish Festival.
I'll introduce it.
Staff report is from Director of Community Events, Allison Leroy.
Good evening, members of council. I'm coming to ask for a waiving of the competitive bidding for the purchase of beer for the Irish Festival. For more than 28 years now, I believe, we have had sponsorship from Coors and Guinness. They do provide $50,000 as well as $20,000 in marketing and service on-site. And the cost to buy the beer is approximated at $156,850, so they do provide about a third of it in cash to buy the beer for us. By state law, only one distributor in an area in Ohio is allowed to sell any beer product. Therefore, to buy these products, we have to buy it from Superior Beverage, which is why we're coming to you tonight to ask for you to waive the competitive bidding process for this purchase.
Any public comment? All right. Counsel, questions for Kathy?
So Allison, in here that and you just commented that they will pay sponsorship fees, and what was the sponsorship fee over the last few years? Is that the same amount, or has it been increased?
It's been about the same amount. Our beer purchases have actually stayed pretty flat or gone down slightly because we're seeing a bigger increase in some of our alternative drinks, including whiskey and the alternatives and those kind of events. So they have actually, well, obviously, the pandemic years, when we did the small one in '21, they went down. But in '22, they were still slightly less than they were in '19, how much we bought from them.
Yeah, I just, in light of all the discussions that we've had about this, the opportunity to, in partnership, talk to them about some of that, I think would be useful as we do that about that sponsorship fee, because it hasn't it hasn't moved. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All right. Jenny, please call roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes. Thank you.
Resolution 27 dash 23.
Amending term and dates for members of the various boards and commissions of the City of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
All right. Staff report is Thad Boggs.
Thank you, Mayor Fox and members of council. This resolution would accomplish the objective of changing term and dates from the variety that currently exists to May 31 on the various years of term ending.
Public comment, Lindsay? Counsel, do we have any questions for Thad? All right. Jenny, please call her all.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 28 dash 23.
Appointing members to the various boards and commissions of the City of Dublin and the Board of Trustees of the Bridge Park New Community Authority.
I'll introduce it.
All right. Our Administration Committee Chair Report is from Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you very much. As you know, each year, city council reviews the memberships of our boards and commissions as they expire, as well as our citizen representative appointments. And this year, we had several vacancies created by terms expiring, as well as resignations on the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending in 2024. I'm delighted to say that we had, as we often do here, a very large pool of wonderful applicants already and willing to serve their community, and we very much thank them for stepping forward. The Administrative Committee and council conducted interviews on March 7 and 8, respectively. I am pleased to bring forth a resolution for the following appointments and reappointments for council's approval this evening. Rebecca Call to Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term ending May 31, 2027. Martha Cooper to the Architectural Review Board for a three-year term ending May 31, 2026. Joel Kreutz to fill the unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals expiring May 31, 2024. Dan Garvin to Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term expiring May 31, 2026. Jessica Tobias Hong Chu and Vicky Von Sadewski to the Community Services Advisory Commission for a three-year term expiring on May 31, 2026. David Walsh to the Records Commission for a three-year term expiring May 31, 2026. Lauren Hunter to Personnel Board of Review for a three-year term expiring May 31, 2026. Sherry Tackett, Citizen Representative to the Bridge Park New Community Authority for a two-year term expiring May 31, 2025. Ketawa Kaito, Isao Shogi, Peggy Kilty, Nikki Lombardo, Max Cho, and Michael Haynes to the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee for a two-year term expiring May 31, 2025. Stephen Dickman, Tim Hansley, and Roger Ansel to the Veterans Advisory Committee for two-year terms expiring May 31, 2025. And Kimberly Hawley, Alex O'Ryan, and Susan Ortega to Chief's Advisory Committee for two-year terms expiring May 31, 2025. Again, we thank everyone for their willingness to serve, and I am pleased to present this resolution to council this evening for your approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a public comment? Council, do we have any questions for Vice Mayor DeRosa? No? Hearing none. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Other business this evening, we will have Public Services Committee recommendation, Tier Three event approval about the Dublin Color Fest, and our staff report is Allison Leroy.
Good evening again. The first thing I bring you tonight is a new event that is proposed to come to Dublin. We discussed this at the committee level, and to remind everybody, when it's a Tier Three event, that usually requires multiple internal meetings beforehand as well. It goes through our internal committee for approval first, and then it goes to city manager, and then it goes to committee before it comes to council. So this is a new event that's they are still looking at Saturday in September. They haven't determined which Saturday yet, and it's going to be in the south part of Kaufman Park. It is the Dublin Color Festival, and it's patterned after a Holy event. Holy normally takes place in the spring, and they are worried that the weather isn't always warm enough or cooperative enough to hold the event in the spring, so that's why they are holding it in September. And it's going to be produced by the International Society for Krishna Consciousness. I had to read that one, get it right. The way they talk, they will not be having any alcohol at this event. It is a vegetarian event, and they call it a clean event because that is part of their religion. And they invite the whole community. They're going to have music. It will be fenced, and there will be a fee for it. And we've been talking with them, and you can see at the end of the recommendation that we have quite a few conditional items that they need to work through before they get approved by the internal committee. So we come to you now knowing that they still need to answer all these questions that we still have, but we're looking for approval tonight so that they can start planning the event. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Allison. Public comment? None. Counsel, do we have any questions for Allison this evening?
Allison, so it talks about appropriate cleanup, including cleanup of colors on grass and in-stream or other natural areas. What is the product that they use to do the coloring, and how would that impact?
They actually did.
I just get worried about stuff in the waters. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, they actually did provide us the, what is it, the MSD? It's a chemical MSDS, thank you, Robert, that told us the whole chemical compound of it. It's basically cornstarch with food coloring in essence. They do this a lot. If you've seen the color runs, they use it for that as well. So they gave us the whole report that tells us exactly how it has to be cleaned. Ninety-eight percent of it will be taken away by the first rain that comes through, and so there has been proven to be no harm on any animals or things.
Allison, do we have any targets for them in these kind of events for sustainability? Do we have any?
It's actually something that we're looking at at our when we're looking through our parks policy, that we're looking at some sustainability requirements. We don't have any official requirements other than they have to provide us a plan, but it's something that we're working with all of our event producers more on as they kind of go through this.
Great. Thanks.
Any other comments? No? Then I move to approve the Dublin Color Fest event with conditions as stated. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
All right. Then our next staff report from Allison is concerning alcohol sales waiver request for the North Market Wine Fest.
Thank you. Last year was the first year for the North Market to move their wine festival up from their downtown location up to Dublin. They really had a great success. For those of you who might have been there, they do serve the wine out on the street, and because that is public property, we have to request for council to approve them to sell the alcohol. One thing to note, too, that they don't allow is they have taken themselves out of the Dora so that you cannot walk in or out of their wine area with alcohol. And I can answer any questions on this.
Right. Thank you. Public comment? No? Any other any questions for her on this?
What was that again about they took the?
They actually have to request to be taken out of the Dora so that they don't want their wine to leave the fenced area where they have the wine festival. Otherwise, by law, anybody who would get the temporary license would automatically be in the Dora. They just requested the state that they are not included in the Dora area.
And why is that? Why don't they want it to leave?
I think when we talked to them last year about it, they wanted people to stay in and enjoy the festival versus taking their wine and leaving. And I think that's the whole idea, is they wanted to keep them within their fenced-in area to enjoy the festival.
So is this just for that evening?
Yeah, just for that one event, just in the fenced-in area out on the street.
And so that would include the public property, not just their facility, to be removed from the Dora?
It's the fenced-in area that's out front, yes. So it's we didn't include a map with it, but it's longshore between John Shields and Teller Ridge and Laramare from longshore to Mooney Street. And so the way it works now is they can go in and outside of the North Market and in that fenced area on the street.
Then how would we handle if anybody was walking with their I get they don't want the wine leaving?
Right.
How will we how would it work with somebody walking and bringing something in?
We well, we do allow them, there's movement through those streets. Otherwise, you couldn't get into the North Market at all. So there is movement to the streets to get to the garages and around. You aren't allowed to take an alcoholic beverage into the North Market, as it is now anyway, but you would be normally allowed to be in those roads. But since it's fenced off, there's still a way around them on the sidewalks. Does that answer that question?
So you just you just can't bring your Dora cup into their fenced areas?
Yes.
Which you could walk you could stand on the outside of their fence and talk to someone on the inside of the.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
So we're presuming that people that are at the festival won't assume that they can walk out of it with the cup that they have in the North Market Wine Festival, because it's not a Dora cup.
Yeah, they don't use the Dora cups, and they do have signs at their exits.
All right. Any other questions? No? I move to approve the North Market's request for an alcohol sales waiver on city property. May I have a second?
A second.
All right. Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
All right. And the last item on this agenda is alcohol sales waiver request. That's a mouthful. 2023 Dublin Irish Festival. Allison?
And this, obviously, is same situation. It is public property, so we are required to ask permission to serve alcohol in Kaufman Park during the Irish Festival. So that's what I'm asking for here, and we recommend approval, and I can answer any questions.
All right. Public comment? None. Counsel comments? None. All right. I move to approve the request for a waiver permitting the sale of beer, wine, and liquor at the 2023 Dublin Irish Festival. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Allison. Staff comments? Megan O'Callaghan, our city manager.
Good evening, members of council. This coming Wednesday, March 29th, 24 residents will begin their exploration of city operations during the nine-week Citizen University, or McDaniel Citizen U as it's now being known. After extensive communications about the opportunity, we are expecting a diverse pool of residents who range in age from 22 to 81, and they're all interested in learning more about their city, the people that serve them, and how they can contribute to the greater community in the future. We have 26 city work divisions that have designed interactive and informative sessions to show the professional and public service duties they carry out daily. Legislative services staff has the schedule up-to-date on council's calendar, and if you would like to attend a session and be included on the agenda for that evening and provide some comments to the group, please let us know. With the city's coordination and partial funding participation, the Ohio Department of Transportation recently bid a project to resurface State Route 745, Dublin Road Corridor from just north of the Emerald Parkway intersection to the southern corporation limits of the Village of Shawnee Hills. And this is the area that encompasses the sanitary sewer work that was performed last year. We expect construction or resurfacing work to begin in mid-April to early May, and a lot of that will depend on when the asphalt plants open. And the contract completion date for that work is prior to the 2023 Memorial Tournament. So we're anxiously awaiting getting that work done, completed, prior to the tournament. All work will be performed while maintaining traffic where possible with efforts to minimize interruptions to motorists while providing access for emergency vehicles in the safe work area, and that's all dependent upon weather. Our team's working with ODOT to coordinate the maintenance traffic details and will communicate construction information to residents and motorists throughout the duration of that work. Next, the city retained EMHNT for design of the waterline replacements Phase 7 project, and that project will upsize existing small diameter water lines to six-inch water lines on several cul-de-sacs in Muirfield. Survey crews are needing to begin performing field surveying and data collection within the right-of-way, so notification letters will be sent out to affected properties tomorrow, and that survey work is expected to be, begin next week. And then finally, or lastly, the Ohio State Women's Basketball Team plays Virginia Tech tonight at 9:00 in its first Elite Eight appearance in 30 years, and I'd like to highlight 2019 Dublin Kaufman grad and Dublin resident J.C. Sheldon for her role in that effort. And I know we're all rooting for J.C. and the team, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel reports this evening. We have a committee report from our finance committee. Counsel member Ludo.
Thanks, I'll keep this really brief. We did a bed tax grant process review as well as an overall revenue and allocation review. Thank you to Matt and his staff for that. We have asked for some additional information and some, we'll have some future discussions on a formal policy for the Hotel Motel Fund, as well as, we'll have an additional conversation about the process for application and adjudication, and that'll come back to us, I think, at our next meeting or the one after that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Liaison reports, and asking council members, it looks as if we have. Council member Keeler has a report on Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission.
Not a lot to report. A preliminary plat for 248 single-family homes was approved. It's called Homestead Farms, south of Brock Road, east of 33, and of course, it's in the Dublin School District.
Thank you. And council member Amrose Grooms, do you have a report on Mid-Ohio Regional Planning or Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah, looking forward to the state of the region. Is this Thursday, the 30th? It is a sold-out event. We expect over 1,000 people. It should be a fantastic show. We've got a great speaker lined up, and there are a few award recipients. So looking forward to that, and the team has been working really hard to bring that forward. Relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, fortunately, they've had fairly light agendas on the last couple of meetings. They've had some very interesting informal reviews. And if you have any questions or would like further information about that, I'm certainly happy to answer.
Thank you. Next is council roundtable. Counsel member Cram, would you like to start?
I don't have anything. It was a quiet week. We were on spring break and all was, all was wet.
Yeah, if we haven't already, I think it would be a nice gesture to send our friends in Carmel and Franklin a gift for their generous, the generosity, their hospitality, spending time with us. I think a number of us are going through their communities, and it would be nice for us to send something to thank them for their time. If we were Hershey, Pennsylvania, we'd send chocolate. I'm sure you can get creative and find something that says Dublin, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. John?
I just want to say that, you know, we, I think we're in pretty much agreement about the flavor tobacco issue, and I just think it'd be interesting if we would pass that and then allow the businesses to liquidate their inventory, you know, until December or January. So, yeah, I'd like to see a sort of move on that. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm not sure how you find a gift for the city that has every roundabout ever, but it was, it was a very nice visit. And that's all I have, just go Bucks.
Chris?
I have one question for, for staff about the lift station along Dublin Road. It seems like progress has kind of halted there once they got all of the, pipe is in the ground, certainly, and I was kind of hoping that they would be bringing their construction materials in and out before we pave that road, but that doesn't look like that's in the likely column at this point in time. But here's Paul to answer all my questions.
We were hopeful for the same thing, but unfortunately, the pump station itself, which is a manufactured unit that's all going to come in in one piece, there's some delays on components of that, they delayed the production of it. So it is being, going to be delivered later than we anticipated.
Do we have a delivery date on it yet?
I do. I don't have it committed to memory, and I can share that with you, but I believe it's this fall now.
And they can't construct any of the facilities till they mount the pump, right?
They've got everything built that they can build presently until that unit's actually brought in. It's actually going to look like a modular building. I mean, it's all assembled and then just dropped in place.
Do they drop it by crane, or how does?
Crane. But it won't be in the roadway, it'll be actually on-site.
Oh, really? They can't do it from the road?
Well, just the reach is too far. I mean, they'll, they'll bring it on trailer to that location and then pick it up and swing it over and set it, so.
Okay.
But we'll make sure the road's protected. I mean, we're, we knew this schedule was going to happen.
Yeah. Well, appreciated. I knew there was some logical reason because they really, that project seemed to go quite well. They made good progress on that, and they were clean and efficient, and it's been, seems like for four or five weeks, it's been kind of a standstill.
Yep, and that's true. Paving.
Soon as the asphalt plant opens, Megan.
Yeah, she said April, May.
Great, thank you. And then I had just some updates. So I attended my Information Technology and Communications meeting in Washington, DC on Saturday. It was, it was really informative, and I think we have some momentum and success in getting the federal government to indicate that municipal fiber is something that is permissible, and hopefully that will end some of those discussions down at the State House relative to the upcoming budget and things of that nature. So I am, I am hopeful that that will continue to gain traction. While we were there, I did meet with another fellow from the Siemens Corporation, and his name's Ryan Dalton, and we have been talking about solar panels and their placement. And Siemens did an installation in Bronzeville, Illinois, and they, they have termed it a microgrid, and it is a really interesting concept that I would like us to pursue looking at. And what they did was they took all of the commercial buildings in Bronzeville and multifamily units with flat roofs, and they installed solar and wind both on the, onto these units. And they were able to, to have a redundancy of power and create a microgrid that was, that serviced all of those units, and everyone that was in that area benefited from the feedback to the grid and the power. And so I know that I had brought up while we were looking at solar panels on residential structures that if we wanted to really look at green technology, that this would, you know, that if we could have, if we could densify them in one specific area, that that could be advantageous. So I'm going to have a follow-up meeting with him because I found it to be very interesting, and there was a lot of grant money that was available to do that sort of thing. And many of the corporations that they worked with were thrilled to be part of that because most of the corporations within Bronzeville had sustainability goals, and it helped them to achieve their goals. And then it helped to reduce the overall utility bills for the residents of Bronzeville. It gave them redundancy of power, and then it was green. So looking forward to, to visiting that further and bringing some of that information back. It, the, the way that they did it involved a lot of green technology, but also electric vehicle technology because they were able to charge during optimal times of the day and draw down on the vehicular batteries at the non-optimal time. And so as we talk about, you know, I've heard Dr. Marshhausen say a number of times, well, you know, their mandates are coming for electric buses, and what, they've done some power calculations of what would be required for them to have enough power to charge every bus in the off time. And some of these technologies, these microgrids, might be solutions for those problems of having that abundance of power at various points of time. So I just wanted to bring that forward. He was a fascinating guy, and I'm, I really want to hear more about what they've done in Bronzeville. It's, it's a disadvantaged neighborhood, which I, I find it fascinating that they were able to accomplish those things. So hopefully, I will be bringing back some more information about that in the near term. Thanks.
That's fantastic. I just had one thing. Again, thank you to the newly, I guess, elected here and appointed, rather, and the returning members of our boards and commissions. And I wanted to invite the residents, there will be a reception with a swearing-in ceremony on April the 10th at 6:00 PM. That's just right prior to our regular council meeting where we will swear them in and have an opportunity to meet with their fellow board and commission members. So we invite everybody, and again, thanks for everybody who will be joining.
Thank you. I am going to take just a few minutes because I know where, there's a basketball game on tonight, I think at 9:00, but just a few minutes to share with you a little bit about this Dublin, Ireland trip that I took with Director of Communications, Lindsay Weisenauer, and our Director of Community Events, Allison Leroy. You know that we traveled on March 15th to Dublin, Ireland, to sign a Friendship City Agreement between our two cities. And for the public listening, the agreement formalizes a renewal of a Friendship City Agreement that we've had with Dublin since 2017. And we also signed a memorandum of understanding that outlined a mutual collaboration that would create a successful relationship and meet the mission of providing the wellbeing, promoting the wellbeing of both of our cities. And just quickly, the four items identified in that memorandum of understanding are culture, including a link to that, our Dublin Irish Festival, smart cities initiatives, citizen engagement, and prioritizing work on free, low-carbon cities and sustainability. And so we took over 500 pictures, but we're only going to show you a few. Most of them are on the Dublin Flickr page, so if you're interested in looking at them, I hope that you take a look. But first and foremost, we want to thank the Lord Mayor, Carolyn Conroy, and all of the councilors and members of the staff of Dublin for showing us an absolutely wonderful time. They were so hospitable, so gracious. We found that we have very much in common with Dublin, Ireland, and their welcome and their openness to share was just generous and so appreciated. So on this first picture, we were welcomed by the staff and the Lord Mayor at her residence, the Lord Mayor's Mansion. It's the oldest freestanding house in Dublin, and it was purchased for that use to be the mayor's residence in 1715. The Lord Mayor, Carolyn Conroy, was elected by her council peers on June 27th, 2022, and she only serves a one-year term. She has a strong interest in public transportation, youth, community engagement, parks, elder care, wellness, and she's a member of the Green Party that's known in Ireland as the Ecology Party. Second, we attended a formal dinner with the mayor and other council members, their chief of staff, their city manager, which is the second gentleman on the right-hand side, and their city staff. They were very wonderful. We signed, number three, the friendship, the next slide, the friendship agreement and the memorandum of understanding, and we exchanged gifts, and I will show you what they gave the city of Dublin. And I don't want to drop that. This is a beautiful Waterford crystal piece that they, that they sent home to share with us. We brought them an embossed Celtic design that was in a frame, and we also brought them eight of the artist-designed enamel geocoin coins depicting symbols of Dublin, Ohio that was provided by the Dublin Arts Council. If you'll note, the chain worn by Lord Mayor Conroy, it was presented to Dublin, Ireland by King William III in 1698, and she wears it for civic events, ceremonial occasions, and at this, at her own discretion. And as she said to me, it's very, very heavy. The next slide is an image of a room that's in the mansion. It's called the Round Room, and it is an image of the inaugural meeting of the first Irish parliament that met in the Round Room in the mansion. We were shown the room on a tour of the mansion, and they use that room today for private and public events. The next slide is, we were asked to go on a tour of Temple Bar, which is a cultural area. Art Officer Ray Yeats took us around, and this is a council-funded cultural district and it's home to various artists, studios, galleries, theaters, restaurants, Irish pubs, and residences, and it is a pedestrian-only area. This is the Blue Box, and Andy, you're going to be interested in this, the Blue Box Building that houses various spaces like a block box theater, gallery, and creative spaces. And their arts funding is primarily from the government. And interestingly, as we charge our developers for open space, they charge 5% of all commercial development to be set aside for the arts. We are told the venues are constantly active and very well-attended. The next slide, this is also the Blue Box Theater. The next slide is the Smock Alley Theater. This was originally built in 1662 to be a royal theater, and it has four separate programming spaces, as well as a bar and catering facilities. It was restored and reopened in 2012, and its mission is to be available for performance and instruction in the arts. So it's a school there. The next one is, inside this particular royal theater is one of their programming spaces, and they use this for a variety of activities, whether it's dance, comedy, music, whatever. This is the Temple Bar Gallery and Studio. It's on the street in the Temple Bar area. It provides an exhibition gallery. And above it, they have 30 studio spaces for artists that can be rented at a very affordable rate for a three-year period, and if you are one of the artists who competes for this space, you are, you are a very lucky person because it's a very significant artist space to be in this particular gallery. And all of this is funded by the council. This is a picture of Henrietta Street. 14 Henrietta Street is, I think, probably the very first doorway there. The city of Dublin and their council is so very proud of this site and its restoration, and it was very anxious to show us this museum. This Georgian homes, these along these streets, were built in 1720 for the most wealthy members of Dublin society. They have beautiful high ceilings, they're over five floors tall, they have fine craftsmanship, decorations. The furniture is exotic, the fabrics were wonderful, and they were occupied by various entities, but by 1911, after the Great Famine, cheap housing was needed, and these beautiful homes were subdivided and turned into tenement housing. And 14 Henrietta Street, one resident housed over 100 people during that time, and those deplorable conditions are infamous in Dublin's history, and the city council paid for the purchase and the restoration of 14 Henrietta as a social history museum as part of the Dublin City Heritage Plan of 2002. So it's very interesting. We got to see how they took these rooms and they divided one floor into four different units, and families lived in them, and it was, it's quite an impactful piece of Dublin's history, and the council spent quite a bit of money, I don't know, $1 million to $2 million in restoring, maybe even more, in restoring this particular house. The next slide, I'm going to have Lindsay talk a little bit about because she had the opportunity also to visit the offices, and we heard a little bit about something very interesting called the Dublin City Council's Beta Project.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of council. So we saw and heard a lot while we were in Dublin, Ireland, and this was one of their programs from the city government that we all kind of said, that's a really cool program. So we, we all were talking about that afterward, and it's called Dublin City Council Beta. This is their live mechanism for imagining, testing, and implementing creative and innovative ideas. And what immediately caught my attention about this program is the branding, because as you all know, I'm here in Dublin, Ohio, we're part of the Beta District. And so it was interesting to see them using the same concept in a completely different way. Here, we use it for economic development to draw businesses and innovators to the area to test out their cutting-edge ideas, and theirs is more directed toward the residents. So it's a program where residents, tourists, anyone can go onto their website and just suggest an idea. So I went through the process myself and saw where you just go in there, you identify a problem, they ask you to identify your solution, and then you say if you have seen this somewhere else or give some examples. And so it was really great, and they have some really great examples that they have gone through. And what's fantastic about it is it's a great way to advance ideas, and you know it's just to test out. And so they say that the phrase "in beta" is a phrase used extensively just to talk about something that is imperfect, it's being released sort of roughly, and that we're going to try it. And so they have a great outward-facing dashboard that shows all of the ideas that come in, and then where they are in the process, and then whether they are going to continue with the idea, or they tried the idea and they're not going to move forward with it or anything like that. So it was just a really neat way to kind of show how they can think big, start small, and then move faster. And just a couple of the ideas that they had, someone had an idea for, they had graffiti on their utility boxes, and we see things like this around here, too, where you're just kind of bringing the arts and putting that on places like that. And they said that they see pretty much no graffiti anymore after having artists come in and, you know, put their designs on utility boxes. So they went ahead and tested this idea, and I looked earlier today, and it looks like it's now in the stage of where they want to expand it a little bit more. So it's been tested and seems to be something that they like. And another one that they had was the bike bunkers. So these were a place where you can keep your bike if you don't have a shed or a garage or anything like that, you don't have a good place to keep your bike. And so it's a public thing there that you can use if you are, you know, a bicycle user. So I just thought it was a really interesting way to gather public input. So I just thought it was a really interesting way to gather public input and show just really transparently how you're moving those ideas forward.
This is when we had an opportunity to sit in the grandstand for the St. Patrick's Day parade, and we were sitting next to the, the mayor of Soul Korea, Mayor Osie Hun, and that was very interesting. The parade began with the arrival of the Lord Mayor and her Lord Mayor's coach that was built in 1791. It's only taken out on St. Patrick's Day and to open the Dublin Horse Show. And the following pictures are, I will let Allison speak to, because it's quite different than our, than our St. Patrick's Day parade, although I will say the marching bands, there were at least 10 of them from the United States.
Yes, there are lots of high school and college marching bands, and so we would love to get our Dublin bands over there sometime, would be a lot of fun. But one of the things that they kept telling us is to look out for the pageants at the parade, and we had no idea what that meant. I think we, in my mind, because we have pageant queens, so that's what I think I thought it was going to be, but what these pageants were is they were actually more theatrical. So what would happen is a company, or one of them was sponsored by the city, there was one sponsored by the Tourism Bureau, different people would sponsor these pageants, and they were actually a theatrical performance. There would be an artistic director, they talked about the costume director, a music director, and what they would do is use their funds to create this story on the street. So some of them, I think the first one, I can't even, I think there were at least 500 people in this, at this first performance. It just kept going and going, and so it was just really amazing, and they all had storylines. For example, in this next slide, they had a lot of things that were about environmental, because Kia was a sponsor, and so Kia had their electric vehicles in the parade, but then they had this whole storyline about these sharks that were eating the trash, like, oh, there's, oh, there's the shark. Sorry, I went ahead. There's the shark that was eating the trash. So they would have music, they would work with community groups, they would work, there were some students groups, dance groups, but it created this whole story, and it really added to the cultural aspects of the parade. There was a lot of color, a lot of movement. It just really got the entire people involved in it, and it was just something so different. You know, you didn't see floats. All of these were hand-pushed. You can see that this one is on wheels here. So everything was of, you know, the level of the people, and it was pushed by the people, and it was just a really great experience to, to see that storytelling. So it not only brought a great parade to the people, but it also helped fund some of these cultural groups and some of these other groups out there to kind of bring the whole thing together.
All right, thank you. The next picture, and we're at the very end here, is the old post office. The grandstand that we sat in was for all of the councils, council members, and the old post office, which was the headquarters of the East arising in 1916 for Irish independence, is considered one of their sacred buildings. The next slide is their pedestrian bridge. You all probably know it, the Hay Penny Bridge, and that was really interesting to see on St. Patrick's Day, it was quite crowded. And finally, I just want to highlight that this relationship is viewed as mutual and very appreciated. This is a picture of the news release they included on their website, and so I could show you many more pictures with many more stories, and we'll share that with staff, and we'll probably write another memo, but I particularly want to thank everyone in Dublin, Ireland, and also to Allison and Lindsay for being such great traveling companions. Thank you all for listening to our little presentation, and we just wanted to share our excitement about that trip. So if we don't have anything else, then I would say it's time to go home, turn on the TV, and thank you all.
Go Bucks!